And the native plants, I remember saying that like eight times.
Yes.
The native habitat, is that, did they do anything with that?
Yes, so a lot of the plants that they came back with and just said, tell us what you'd like to see, they gave us, they threw out a lot of things that were options. And um, the plants certainly are not chosen at this stage, it's where do you put the plants? Was the, was what's chosen at this stage. Because the plants, they, I mean, they did ask, they're like, do you, do you like rabbit grass, do you like, Noah could rattle off half of them, I don't even know the names of half the plants, but, that wasn't the issue, the issue is where do you put them, and that's what we're asking you. What, that we will let you pick plants, we're not, we're not there yet, we're deciding where they go.
I am not terrible at it.
Okay.
I'm like in between.
So thoughts. Do we want to talk about some of the specific?
Aesthetics.
Discussion about where they go. So that we can talk about it online. Again, this is all really just high level, this is, are we in the right ballpark? For example, one of the things that they talked about. One of the things we talked about on the antelope interchange is do we want to continue street trees down antelope, which would help with traffic.
Speeds.
Speeds, but, it also increases our cost because now we have a maintenance area that we have to maintain. So, and.
What kind of trees?
Again, that's not a chosen at this point, the point is, do we want to maintain that area or do we not?
I appreciate visual friction. And I think it looks nice.
If they live.
If they live.
Drivey Park, how many did we lose of that, a lot.
And, and they know, they're aware of that. Consultant, we discussed that actually in the meeting that, you know, it needs, this particular environment is extremely harsh.
We have an awful lot of volunteer Russian natives around here.
They got attitude.
Do you have a preference on trees, is there a kind that you know?
So why don't you join us at the table?
So one thing I want to talk to you about is.
Please.
I, I know when we put the buffalo in the Centennial Park. We planted the, the grass, the native grass. And it looked really nice. But is, is that stuff worth it? Cause I noticed we just mow it now.
Well, yeah, you just mow it down once a year though.
Apparently you mowed it recently?
Yeah. Once or twice a year.
But I think that when it's growing, it's really nice, and yes, we have to trim it. But it's, it's really effective for creating the look with the buffalo, so I like that. And they were suggesting that if you can see in the spots, the two little strips, they were suggesting they would put some buffalo in those two little strips that had the native grass underneath them, it's just an accent as you get off of, it notices on both sides of the exit of the freeway, not on the entrance, so this is where it would be. I thought that was nice. Again, we're not picking trees, so.
We reward you for coming to Syracuse, but no, we're leaving.
And I would say before we put a tree, maybe ask an arborist, that might, you know.
Think that would be.
The local environment that we're in.
So I, I guess what was, I guess the thing that I'm missing in all this, I, I think conceptually, I love the idea of the little plants and everything, what, what I want to see is, I, I see things like walls, branding element on wall.
Okay, so that's what, that is.
I see stacked rock, I see.
Yeah, that's something we need to talk about, because there was the, do we want to do um, a walled element? Uh, or do we not want to do a walled element, and what this is, is um, i- it's kind of like a bumper of where the, instead of just the flat slope. We've noted, or they've noticed, they said to us, they've noticed a lot of exits where there's a sharp incline, it's hard to keep things growing there, they often die.
The water.
The water just runs right off, so if you want to keep a space where the plants continue to grow, you'd want to put a reinforced wall, which would give us the chance to do something like put our logo on that wall, like we did at Splash Pad. Um, as you're coming into the city, you could have something there that we, anyway, so that's an element that's an option for us to talk about, I like it, I don't know what you guys think.
But that is, that's probably going to significantly increase cost.
The logo probably not so much, didn't create a lot of cost. The wall will be a cost.
It's a poured concrete wall, is what you're, what you're talking about. Like, I would for a stacked stone wall, but again, that's.
So again, those are choices that you guys have to.
Steel.
Yeah.
Coordinated.
That's pretty.
Were we gonna try and do any, like I noticed we had the signage on there.
Yeah.
Were we gonna try and put that in there?
Yes, so did you, is that not?
Intersection.
It does show on that, I, we can point it out. Go back to the main intersection, it's not on the, it's over there, okay. So. It is right there, yes, thank you, and then on the other side. So it's, it's both on the entrance side, again, we're using those giant signs.
Okay, yeah. Um, I was curious about the walls, I think it's good to incorporate those things, the wall would look nice.
One of the things that they did bring to the table, I'll just share with you is that you see the little triangle as on the entrance way that just divides between eastbound and westbound? Those are really large. And they said that, you know, if you were to make those garden areas, they would be hard to take care of.
Bags of native flowers, you can just toss out there.
And they also brought forward that some places it let us, at some places it dies.
We, we did that, those one year in one of our gardens. They were, they were beautiful. But they made a mess.
Do Not offers that for free, it's, it's just a wildflower mix and it usually comes up the first year great, the question is, does it last? Because I can point to lots of places on the freeway where.
It doesn't, but the bigger areas, it's more of a, they can reproduce on their own space because, and there's less ways for them.
And what happens when it grows?
It'll come back to seeds.
I would rather just do rock, just because I do want to at least make it look like we're trying to be a little water.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. You don't want those flowers, it's just native. Native flowers, you don't water.
They, they'll have a hard time getting water to those triangles.
Yeah.
They don't, you don't water them.
But they need water. To me, it wouldn't look a whole lot different, whether it's just rock that's just kind of unadulterated plain. Great rock, that's also got trash and stuff floating in it versus a wheat patch that has flowers blooming out of it.
So then what's the cleaner, what's the?
Lisa brings up a key point, and I do want to get to some of the.
What's the maintenance then? Because rocks are, are one thing where you can go through and you can douse the entire area in those color every, every season that you need to, but the flowers, you're gonna have to till up every single year at least.
They will re-grow.
So you think that even if they die? That we're not?
Yeah, they'll, they'll re-wildflower.
Like I said.
Anything for them.
The wildflower mix. But do they get overrun with weeds or?
That's why I'm saying there's some maintenance to it, because even if right after you throw them out, you can't just walk away.
Poison ivy and milkweed will grow anywhere. Not poison ivy. Bind weed, and so you're saying we should plant bind weed.
We're saying, we're saying we should do the rock to not. So here's another thing that Lisa brought up, and I want to, I want to touch on, Lisa brought up a good point.
Rocks.
They, they brought up, you know, you have to be conscious of what you put in these cross spaces because of litter. People will throw things out and how easy is it for you to clean that up? Versus, like if it's rock, you see where it is very clearly, and it, it, if it's flowers, it could just start to work its way into the dirt and that's, I'm not saying flowers are bad, I'm just saying that's a different cleanup process.
There's no littering, estate block.
Comes up and it's all over.
Sure.
I'm just looking in terms of, there's a yum yuck to this, which from afar, how does it look? And when you get up close, what's it actually? So from, from far away, yes, from far away, you're like, oh, look at that lovely field of flowers, and then they pull up and they park. And they're waiting at the light, and they go, look at that debris strewn crap hole. Is, it's not taken care of, right? So we don't ever want that to be.
I think that was very descriptive, thank you.
First impression of our city. And, and so from afar, it has to be just as, you've got to take into account what it looks like from close up. So if, if your general idea is we want the aesthetic to be, I mean, even, even these buffalo are quite simplistic in design, we aren't, we aren't known for being a wildflower strewn city, we're known for antelope island, which is your grasses and your buffalo and rock and water, and so I, even though I'm a fan of flowers for my own home, I know the maintenance that is so obnoxious that sometimes I curse myself for having planted them, because I don't want to go take care of. That sometimes I curse myself for having planted it because I don't want to go take care of them. So I I just didn't. And thinking in terms that we have a large expanse. I think we want this to look as clean. As possible. And so I would be more apt to say. Do something low maintenance.
So I'm going to narrow down a couple of questions. Um, one, I. Are you still on board with the buffalo, the way they've drawn them into the plan? Because I I think it was a yes.
Yeah, buffalo or queue.
Okay.
I was still hoping for a mosquito. No.
The second question would be. How far do we go down uh outside of this little intersection area like down Antelope? Do we continue the trees? Is that our responsibility? Is that something that we want included in this project?
I mean, I love trees.
I do too, but.
Not a lot of trees. That out there and the ones that are out there are like. The corkscrew willows and things like that. And there I have those at my property and they, I have to. I have to clean up. After them every week.
Yeah.
They're ridiculous. They have something in our neighborhood that it's just.
But they're beautiful. They're big globe trees and they're beautiful and. Big strong trees.
But they're huge and wide.
Yeah.
That you have to maintain every. Twenty to thirty years as well. And that's something else we have to. We would be on the hook for if we started.
Every twenty to thirty.
No, that they start to die and you have to start to replace them.
We don't plant maples.
They're not. Everybody around you recommends Autumn Blaze. And they look great, but they are high maintenance. They do not.
Are trees even viable? I mean, I don't think if we want them, are they viable?
Here's the other thing that is I. When you're dealing with a high traffic area like this, you're an awful lot of exhaust from cars as well. This is not like your garden, which.
Okay, but trees absorb that and create oxygen.
Okay.
So.
Oh, okay.
But I think you do that. And I realized to do that after I started to clean my mouth. Um, so. But right there, the maintenance on any tree you put there is going to be a gastronomical.
Okay, so I'm sensing. Less trees, more smaller things because it's easier to maintain. Is that, is that a fair assumption from what I'm, okay?
That entrance to Roy looks pretty good.
They did that actually, same company. So the next question is the walls. You like that or do we move away from that?
I like the walls. I I don't want concrete. I don't want to.
I agree.
I like the rock if there's greenery around it, not if there's more rock.
Okay.
I think the state. Does. Seeds.
He literally just said that. Where were you?
Okay, so we will come back and talk plants. Are there anything that were in the samples that we threw out there that you want us to give the feedback? We like this, we don't like this of the. Of the kind of.
I like the buffalo.
Okay, but I mean of the plants. We like this type of plant. We don't like that.
You said we weren't talking about that.
We're not picking plants. I'm saying feedback for them. Because they'll come to us with several. They'll come to us and say, okay, you wanted grasses. Like Noah threw out native grasses. They threw out like five examples of what they are. I couldn't tell you what they look like. And they'd have to come to us with pictures, but.
See, that's where you come in, the native, and then you can do the visual.
Let me, I want to give Noah a chance because he wanted to comment. He was in the meeting.
I know.
Hey, guys. Yeah, I think you guys already pretty well covered what I was gonna bring up. This is good feedback because this is really close to what we've been talking about. Low maintenance, native plants. We talked about maybe having fewer trees, so we're all on the same board. We like the the wall. Um, on the pork chop, the triangle thing.
Transportation term.
The two smaller ones they were talking about, you know, that's going to be hard to maintain, but the two large ones, hard to get an idea of the scale, but. Those are. Having planted. Vegetation in there. Again, we don't know what or exactly, but low maintenance native plant kind of stuff. So that's probably one of the other changes to this plan, what you're seeing that they they had talked about.
The one concern I have with the pork chops is whatever you do, it can eat up a lot of expense because they are large areas, deceptively large.
I would like to suggest something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the, on the rocks, having filled with rocks and and having seen. The incredible discrepancy between costs of rocks.
Yeah.
I want us to get it. I I would suggest we get the one inch or one and a half inch gray gravel because. At Excel, it's twenty dollars or twenty-two dollars, whereas they go up to two hundred and fifty. To six hundred dollars for some rocks. And I've gone through neighborhoods and cities and thought, I know how much that rock was. And there's no reason for that to be what we're spending our money on. So even if they come up with a design and we found this rock that is. This beautiful tone of orange. Well, that's a strawberry is in cream and that's two hundred and twenty dollars a ton.
So glad you know.
So so saying.
I also know, I want to know why.
Because you feel yours. Say, tell them, don't do any design on your rock because you are seriously talking twenty to thirty times discrepancy.
Very good to know.
That is good to know.
Mexican pebble rock.
Is it? Oh, well, there's the, there's the black. So just so.
Cruse it up a little bit.
Just, I I want to say, get the one, one to. One to one and a half inch or two inch gray gravel. And that is, it's it's. Absolutely not. Dare. Listen, I'm glad I'm the one they mess with.
Okay, so. All right, so I've got, we've got your feedback. Again, this is. This was like really broad. This was like throw this out and get some feedback, so.
It was, I was like, why, what is, why are we even looking?
I do understand that, you know, this is early, but I didn't want to leave anybody out, so that's. Yeah.
Yeah.
We just wanted to make sure everybody was included. This is not any one person's decision, so. Um, can we look, look at the other one? Um, whoever's got this? Okay, so on this intersection, this is the one at two thousand. Uh, we all talked about minimal. What are your thoughts on that? Because. It's not going to be the major access point.
What you can do about the rest of that?
Well, most, some of it can be sold and.
Those little trees.
Not between the area, but that's where I think.
If they're human accessible, that's a spot for criminals to hide.
I guess what I'm worried about.
Streets of mine like that.
Is what the heck do you do with all of?
That's where those spree seeds come in. That's what I.
Awesome.
Yeah, it's cheap. So all the seeds that go there will be watered. Oh, mosquito. We spray those. Actively.
I'm actually kind of hoping. That when this freeway goes in, it's going to create like a barrier to keep mosquito, like it's going to kill off thousands of mosquitoes. Either exhaust or just getting splattered by windshields if they try and cross over to my house.
Be on everybody's cars.
So I'm I'm hoping that somehow there will be less mosquitoes at my house.
I think that's.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I do think we got some some good feedback here and we will take that and pass it on and. They will come with more specific things, but this was like. Are we on the right track conversation? So. All right, I'm gonna move this on. Um, that was.
You know, they actually hatch here, right? They don't just fly over for lunch.
Just, will you let me live in my dream? Longer.
Planning items. Recommendation for planning commission for application for zone change of property located fourteen seventy-two at three hundred south. This is for the uh new Earthworks is moving. I think this really works for them.
Yes.
I don't know that we have to talk too much about it. You've all seen it, right?
Yeah, so does this give them what they're looking for with regards to plows?
Oh, yeah.
In this, in this zone, I, because I thought industrial is what gives them.
No.
The ability to work outside of the hours.
So they will still be subject to our ordinances and it'll be. Up to us to measure and enforce the decibels and the time.
So should it be industrial?
Well, now think about it. No, I don't think so, but think about the fact that they neighbors are an auto detailer and a car wash.
Peace.
So I don't think that anybody's going to be upset that they make noise. At a school, which will not be open until. Uh, other hour.
Probably, I I just wonder if it was the right zone for what they're trying to do because industrial does give you. Higher noise ordinances and a slightly wider time.
Industrial right near there.
Theoretically, someone could complain.
Yep, they could.
If. The the, some of the school is doing, working late, they could come and be like, hey, I'm pretty sure these guys are violating the ordinance.
There's two ordinances. There's zoning ordinance and there's a noise ordinance. This this zone works for what they want to do, then like.
But would they be within the noise ordinance?
They could still very well violate the noise. Yeah, but.
But no one would complain.
The noise order is still sta- still governed because they're a private landscape company. It's not a public snowplow.
And they'd be subject to the noise ordinance in the industrial, it would just have.
Yeah, all their problem.
They want to say, yeah.
But they're just moving to a place where they. There's no houses nearby.
Excited to see this.
Do not want to see them feel like they're going to leave.
Sometimes the best step is the hardest one to take and. It was heavy footed for him, but it's like such a great move forward for their company.
So I'm hearing no objections, so we put this on the agenda for approval in the next business meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
I I don't know if he's here or not, but. Do you think he'll be selling rocks?
Is Ryan?
I think he already does.
He's online.
Okay.
Jeremy.
That's Jeremy online. Oh, that's Jeremy. And we're talking about Ryan. Jeremy, we're we're fine. Jeremy, you're online. We're all approving this, so you're good to go. Um. So I'm moving this past the Earthworks application because it sounds like that's unanimous. It doesn't sound like Ryan Speltz is online, though. We know who's on the phone number. I know, okay, well, we'll just. We'll give him another chance. Okay. All right, so let's. Let's move on to I then review and discuss proposed amendments to Syracuse City Consolidate B schedule Steve.
Hi, Steve.
Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. All right, I'm not going to go through these in detail unless you really want me to. There's just a few suggested changes. It'll be effective July first. Um, we talked about the floodplain. Uh, there's some few changes for flag football and regular football.
Are we just now starting a new flag football then for the older kids?
Break in the two sessions because the other kids have to have certified refs.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you have any, any questions on these, let me know.
Then also the water.
Yeah, forty-one cents is from just a pastor. Well, there's a. A small benchmark adjustment uh for employees, so. We've every two, every year we alternate departments, right? So this year it's Public Works, Admin and CED. Public Works, um, a lot of the employees are paid out the utility funds, so these are adjustments for those.
All understandable. This is the song that never ends, though, isn't it?
Water is just going to keep getting more and more expensive.
Well, everything.
Well, yes.
Right? I mean, I just hope that we can abate this.
So, okay, so this will be on for approval in the next. Uh, should we talk about fiscal year budgeting? Would also be Steve.
Hey, this is just an open item. If you have any questions or comments on the budget. That we've talked about over the last several meetings.
Are we still balanced?
Yes. We are.
Only question I got.
Yeah, I mean, all of them made sense. As we talked about.
The key is that we do, we will be talking wage and retirement, but. The budget is still balanced, so.
Okay.
Okay. If there's no questions on that, we are going to go back to the discussion on Connection Publishing Magazine.
Can I, may I add one thing? Um, with the wage scale, I did note and. Uh, pointed this out to me, the the battalion, I figured on is twenty eighty. Uh, full time instead of a twenty-nine twelve. And so that that number will change as far as the hourly rate in the wage scale. And it's gonna, I think it's thirty dollars.
Going down.
It will go down. It'll still be the same pay.
How is that fair? You still get the same pay. Sorry, bud, you gotta work more hours.
So there's not really more or less.
That's. Okay.
Hey. That was it. Thank you. All right.
Hey, Steve.
Go ahead, Robert. We're doing great on time, so.
Actual summation summary for the floodplanning and the compliance certification said one fifty, B schedule three hundred, so it's the three hundred number.
Okay, so we have that.
Can you explain what that one is? I forgot. Just. Renegation B.
So. We need. We've never.
We've never had.
We've ever never had need for floodplain permit, but it's in the ordinance, man, they want us for a lot of years that uh anyone in a building a floodplain is given. Uh, so I developed the permit with that would be fees for application processing application, which is just like we do for other permits. And then, um. Uh. And then the observation compliance. Is when they're in construction. They are required by FEMA law, yeah, national federal law to have. The floodplain administrator go out and verify that they are building it per their approved plans. Uh, as far, not like, not like building permit site, but specific to just floodplain requirements. So and then the verif- the, what's the other one called? The verification, so there's observation, that's kind of a third time you're going out to. To observe it or inspect it. Um, verification is if there's a problem identified and we have to go back and re-inspect, that's the verification part. It's just a re-inspection.
Why do we help people to build a floodplain again?
Well, we.
But I think we're required to have a fee in case that ever gets approved. Okay, so we could just say no, and this would not ever take place.
I can't. Commit everyone to say no, so.
Well, we can't commit future councils to say no is what we're talking about.
FEMA Federal says that that we, they. Cannot prohibit anyone from building a floodplain. They can just, if. If someone chooses to build a floodplain, they have to comply with the regulations, so. Otherwise, it's a taking, so that's why we even have. Uh, permit in the first place. Have they never been used? That's on.
I mean, I don't want people falling off a mountain.
It would be really.
Problem for us.
Yeah, it would, this is one of those things, it's really poor judgment, but.
My only doggy.
You just can't. Can't fix stupid sometimes.
That was a little more, I would have said.
Thank you. Then yes, let's make sure that if someone's going to do something a little bit wacky, let's help them attempt to do it safely.
Okay, so. We're back to the connection magazine and um. Brody, go ahead. We didn't quite finish.
Yeah, no, um, so. Oh, the new, the new proposed contract is again five years uh with. Except this time what they're proposing is we, you know, we would have a opt-out period every year. Case we, you know, we wanted to opt out. Um, probably the big thing here is the fee.
The twenty cents instead of eleven? So is that literally all we're paying per household is twenty eleven cents?
Addition for.
How in the world can they do that?
Advertise, advertise.
Oh, that's.
You you also get second magazine that's completely free.
I love that magazine. I get that in ministry reports.
So they they gave an explanation there and I I provided in the packet on the reasons for that. One of the changes here that um, you know, we can work this out with Ryan, we don't have to decide it tonight. Um, was. You know, in the previous. Uh, contract, we did have a a maximum on.
On advertising, the amount of pages or, you know, percent of the. The magazine that has advertising in. There is, there is. A good argument as to why he doesn't wanna like fix a certain number, cause there may be some months where there's a lot and then somewhere there's. A lot less, and so we get more content. When there's fewer advertisements. And there may be some months where there's more advertisements and there's less content. Um the the language in their proposal that they have in there is something more like. Reasonable balance. Yeah, reasonable balance, the, you know, it's in their interest to not have a. A magazine that. Sucks.
We would lose interest in that.
So they're kind of saying they rely on, we have a mutual. Uh interest here to make sure that there's a good balance. It feels a little squishy to me, but um.
We can always opt out next year, right?
You know, there's always the option to, it's not working for us. So I I I don't know if there's maybe some guidance we can give, maybe like even say generally. A limit of. Um certain percentage. But maybe it's not a hard and fast rule. I would like to say generally fifty, but I'll allow it to move one way or another around holidays.
I think that we could even do a cumulative, if, because as you said, if some months they have more and other months not so much, there's still an increase in. In product on those months, so what if we were to say?
Each year.
An annual amount.
I would love to get his reaction to a clause like that. If that didn't bother them, like.
Yeah, around Christmas, I'm sure they could sell all the ad space they could put in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think. I would hate to say to them, you can't make any money. Because we've put this.
What it does is offset our costs, the only reason we can do this so cheap is because.
And it's a great little magazine.
I agree.
All kinds of stuff in there.
All right, so. I feel obligated to share this one thing and I'm not making a recommendation, but. Uh last week, I attended the Davis Chamber Luncheon for Mayors, once a year, all the mayors report on the status of their cities. And I was approached by. A marketing company from Leighton. Who. Said they also do a magazine, so in the past, we've said there were no real alternatives. They were very free with the fact that. Their magazine has less advertising and is more expensive considerably, so I. My, what I feel obligated is to share the fact that we used to say in the past, there was really no other option to do this. Apparently there is. But it didn't sound economical, so I didn't really pursue it, if you'd like to, we could. But I don't see us. Doing any better than what we're doing now.
I guess I. I would like to see what they could do.
And there's maybe pamphlet size, it's not even the.
No, I I like same format.
Not magazine size.
To have a big, cost effective, it's fine for people to flip through. A few extra pages of ads, I know that I know what I'm looking for when I'm reading it and I never think, oh my gosh. Another ad, I mean, most of them are people we, businesses we're familiar with or something and and. So I think anything we can do to decrease what our citizens are paying just to be informed is. Is it behooves us to do that?
I'm not recommending we don't do this.
Do you guys want to? If you can at least get, since it is squishy language, uh mass ratio.
I I never wanted to exceed.
Fifty percent accumulative, like.
I would never wanna exceed seventy-five.
My recommendation.
Even sixty-five would be pushing.
I guess my recommendation would be, can we just bounce this off them and if they have no objection? Bring it back and say they had no objection.
Feel free.
If they, if they have a real argument, then we bring back and say, well, this is their argument, so. That's what I would suggest, it's up.
I agree.
Yeah, squishiness gives me no recourse if I'm unhappy.
And again, I I hope you appreciate that I felt obligated to inform you that there was another option, but I'm not really. Unless you're interested in pursuing that. I think. What do you?
Thanks for letting us know.
Thank you, cause that's all I really felt like I needed to do.
Appreciate that.
And so, you know, assuming we can get a nod from them that this is, they would be okay with that on the contract. Um we're planning on maybe getting this on the agenda for a vote.
At the next meeting, cause we need to.
That's okay.
Okay, um. We've taken care of our business and I will call us adjourned.
Second, do we say?
Work second, we just adjourned.
You have a closed session?
From that meeting, so that we can call a business meeting.
Okay.
I said, I thought we had officially.
We do, we do, I. Getting really excited, we were six minutes ahead. All right, so I will. Call the official um. Business meeting intermediate, business meeting into order. And uh our item of business on this is to authorize administration to award. The construction management's general contractor and. Contract to circ construction for fire station number thirty-two project. Do we have any further discussion from what we had in the work session? Then I will take a motion.
Motion to award the construction management general. Contract. For fire station number thirty-two to circ construction.
Second, third.
Move and seconded and third, all in favor. Any opposed? So you may feel like we need to drag this out another minute? So now take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Moved and seconded, all in favor. We are adjourned for the night.